Well, they do not have to appear. We've taken the notes and actually now that I, now that I, you said that, I just realized something. Due to all the problems with my technology here, and I'm so glad you said that, Michael. We were not being recorded up until now. I did not press the record button, so that's my fault, so I'm sorry. But I just want to reread in the record what happened tonight so that we can capture it, okay? Today is March 22nd. We read in the governor's order into the record. We also read into the record the applicant's information that was advertised. And after that, we heard from the following, we heard from the petitioner, Mr. Tumas, who requested, who has requested a variance to put on a roof deck and also his, enclosed the front porch of his home. And then the following persons spoke in favor. And they were Mr. John Roy, 4 James Avenue, Mr. Dylan Doblin, 74 Wilson Road, Joanne Truceill, 95 Wilson Road, Annette Jacoby, 91 Wilson Road, Diane Uranie, 6 James Avenue, and Lilia Fennellin, 10 James Avenue. And no one spoke in opposition. Since the time we've been discussing and deliberating what to do because the application said variance and we're not, we're discussing whether or not a variance is applicable in this situation. So, is it fair to say that all the members feel as though a variance is not appropriate here?
Yes.
I would agree.
Okay. Yeah, but the applicant has not applied for a special permit. So, the question is whether or not we can provide a special permit if in fact it has not been advertised. And we've decided that we cannot do that. So, we're going to continue this matter for three weeks. And if I could get a date from all the members, please? April 19th, maybe?
Jocelyn, were we going to put it on with the next hearing? Did you say there's another hearing coming up?
We haven't scheduled it yet, so that's the option is, we do have to, if we're going to continue a matter, it must be to a date certain.
So, could we try and continue it to a date certain and then maybe try and schedule the other hearings for those nights?
Yes, we can try to do that.
Okay.
So, if we were to do that, then I would go, I don't want to go too far out, but I'm thinking April 19th to 26th. That's one month.
Is the 19th Patriots' Day, does that matter to anybody?
It does.
It may.
Get you on a holiday.
Well, I didn't know whether the 12th or the 19th is Patriots' Day.
Well, that's what I'm looking at. I don't know if the 19th is Patriots', well, it's the Monday.
And we discussed the other applications in, we want to be able to give them enough time anyway. Those may not be able to make it.
Yeah, the 19th is a holiday.
Yeah, the 19th is a holiday.
We can't have it on the 19th.
Right.
All right. So, we're looking at 26.
Do we do it on Tuesday, the 20th?
No, I can't make, um, wait a minute, hold on, strike that.
Joyce, in the process, is this a, are we doing this as a continuance of a hearing? Are we doing this as a withdrawal of a petition for a variance?
I think it's going to be a continuance and he's going to resubmit some paperwork so that we have on record of what he's applying.
Okay, just want to be sure we're doing it.
That would mean we don't have another application fee, is that fair enough?
20th is good.
Okay.
So, just to clarify, I don't have to resubmit the 13 copies, the 100 pages there of all the pictures again, or would you like to have another set?
Well, why don't we do that? We're going to, we already have the documents that you've completed, the plans and everything. All we're really going to need is that new application, the, for the paperwork part, not the plan.
Okay.
And that's pretty easy.
Right, because intro here still says, you know, the variance, so it's one page, I suppose. And then I just covered the application fee for the next hearing, right?
You won't have to pay an application fee because you're continuing this matter.
Okay.
But you may have to pay for the advertisement.
Oh, that's a nice one. Yeah, it's.
So, is April 20th good for everyone?
Yes.
Yes. I can do that.
I can do. Joyce, also, do we need to have a motion to accept this move?
Yes, our next step.
All right.
Go ahead, Dave.
Anyone want to bring a motion?
Just try, want to word it properly, that's all.
Yep, yep.
Anyone want to bring a motion to?
That's.
Motion to continue the application to allow the applicant to amend, amend the application document.
Actually, I have a question before we make the motion. Did we get any input from the planning board on this one?
No.
Okay. I mean, it would, I guess it, it may or may not matter, but it might have been helpful, but.
I went to that one, basically, they voted not to say no input. They don't do that.
Okay.
But that's essentially what they concluded.
Right. I will second the motion.
Okay. A discussion on the motion. All in favor, roll call, please.
Peter Barber votes aye.
David Walsh, aye.
David McCool, aye.
Max Casper, aye.
Justin Campbell, aye. Okay, this matter, and we're going to continue on to our next matter. Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody.
The next matter, see if it's time yet, 5:30, perfect, 5:38. It's for 10 Intervale. The applicant present?
Yep.
Great. If we're going to do the same thing we did last time, I know you were here, but I'm going to just quickly review it, because that's what we need to do. Okay, so, um, we started here. This is the advertising that was placed in the newspaper. This was on March 8th. It says, "A public hearing will be held by the zoning board of appeals on Monday, March 22nd via remote technology pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law chapter 30a, section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of persons who may gather in one place." And the meeting tonight at 5:30 PM is a public hearing on the petition filed by Amy Gracielle for the property located at 10 Intervale Road, Nahad, seeking a zoning change. The inspector of buildings has denied a building permit because the proposed zoning change is in violation of section 4.07-8.2 of the zoning bylaws of the town of Nahad where the proposed change requires a special permit for the use of not more than two rooms and requires one parking space per employee and/or anticipated visitor. So, we're going to have, start our meeting now, and we'd like you to make your presentation. And then when you're done, we will talk about, ask any questions that we have, and we will ask if anyone is here to speak in favor or against your application. And then we'll deliberate and try to make a decision this evening, okay?
Okay. I have a two-car attached garage that I would like to use one of my garage bays as a hair salon. I would be the only employee of the salon, and I would only have one to two clients there at any given time.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay, Dave, you have any questions for the applicant?
What is the size of the bay that you're talking about?
It'll be 236 square feet.
Okay. And we'll have plumbing, et cetera, for running that type of business?
Yeah, it'll have a handicap bathroom, it'll have a utility sink, and also a hair washing station.
What's the total square footage of the, of the house on the first floor?
On the first floor, it's, um, I think 1,500 square feet.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, David McCool here, Jocelyn, just real quick, I know that, I've been by the property, I know the driveway's fairly spacious if I remember correctly. But, so what is your, your parking plan?
I currently have a four-car parking driveway, and when, if I have, get permission to go with the salon, I am adding an extra two lane, uh, two-car parking. So, I'll have a total of six cars will be able to park in my driveway.
Okay, so it'll be minimal impact on any of the butters, and it would seem there would be minimal impact on your butters.
Correct.
Was this advertised as a, as a special permit, is that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good. I was just a little confused by the application.
Any more questions for the applicant?
Nope.
Okay. Next step is that we will ask if anyone is here to speak in favor of the applicant, the application. Several other people on here, trying to see if there's anyone speaking, interested in speaking in favor. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition of the petitioner's application?
Hey, Jocelyn.
Hello.
This is Michelle El Capano, 29 Ocean Street. I'm not speaking in opposition nor in favor. I wanted to know what your hours of operation are going to be.
So, I work a four-day work week, and I usually work an eight-hour day, so it would be typical of a nine-to-five day or 11-to-7 to accommodate some of my clients at night.
And what days of the week are you going to be opening or available?
I usually work Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Saturdays.
And are you going to put a sign on the property?
Yep. Let a small sign on the house that has the name, "It's required for a business."
Thank you.
One foot by nine-inch sign, according to the, I think that's the Knowles Hair Salon in the, on the, the plans that we've received.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so is there anyone here to speak, anyone else to speak in favor or in opposition? Okay. All right, so I have a couple of questions, um, to follow up from what Michelle just asked, and that is that in terms of the hours that you're working, you expect that you're going to have overlap, like one person coming and then another person waiting, are you, are you going to have any employees?
So, I will not have any employees, and typically, um, you know, I service one client at a time, but if I had a client that was getting a chemical service, they would be processing while I could also do another client. So, at most, there would be two people in the salon at once.
And is this a new business, or is it what you're already doing for work?
I've been a hairdresser for 30 years, and I rent a Sharon Swamp spot, but with the COVID pandemic and having to, you know, keep people six feet apart and all that, it's been difficult to keep my hours. And so, I thought this would be a better option, just to work on my own and have my own clients come here.
This is a general comment, that would be a hardship.
Thank you, Peter.
I'm looking through the table, well, actually, I'll let you finish and we get into deliberation.
Okay, so I think we are at that point where we, no one else would like to speak in favor or against, and we have no, well, questions for you at the moment. So, we're going to go into deliberation and give us a little few minutes to talk about this matter, and we'll go from there. Okay? So, Max, David, Peter, David, sweetie.
So, I'm looking through the table of use regulations, what's allowed in different zoning districts.
Okay.
And I'm not even finding hair salon, I don't know what it's listed under. Is it professional, um, no. Any, anyone else?
Well, I'm not sure what we did when we, a couple of years ago, we did one on corner of Summer Street and Summer Street Court, which was basically the same situation.
Yep.
We opened up a hair salon, I don't remember what, you know, what the professional name was, but I know we had no problems in passing that.
Right, I'm just, I, I don't know, I came across it, I'm looking, you know, I see exercise and dance studios, daycare, I just, I don't see anything. I mean, it basically talks about typical, typical businesses that are in residences. But I, again, I don't see any, I see nothing with hair salons.
Right.
So, you're also saying you don't see anything that disallows it?
Correct, correct. I'm, I'm merely saying that I'm looking at the, what is, what is allowed in different zoning districts on the table, and I don't see anything that.
There's some special rules for, for situations like this. I think you just, I think they're in another spot, but these are, these are like specifically dealt with in the bylaw, these, these, these specific uses. Is it 4, 4.06?
Um, no, 4.06 is renting of rooms to roomers and lodgers.
Take a look at 4.07.
4.07, yeah.
Right. The problem with, with that is that although it seems to fit into this particular section, when I look back at the definitions under home occupation, it says right on it, "Home occupations do not include such uses as barber shops." I thought that was strange. I know we've allowed one in the past.
There's like, there's a whole bunch of them, there's got to be.
Yeah, we've definitely done it.
Is there a difference in the law between a barber shop and a hair salon? I assume we're talking about a hair salon, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
But I don't see anything in that section, Jocelyn, 4.7, where, where do you, where do you see it specifically does not say barber shop?
That is the home occupation definition. Go back up to your definitions, look at the home occupation definition that's in there. I'm also going to take a quick look at some of the prior decisions to see which one it was that we did, that was, um.
I, I know where, I know which building it's in, so I, I just can't tell you the address of Summer Street or Summer Street Court. And I definitely know the house.
No, I'm not finding it, we know it's there. We definitely had one.
What about accessory uses, is it in that, 4.12? 4.12, um.
Accessories incident, that's an open, yeah, I would say this is incidental. There's accessory uses incidental to the above permitted uses, subject to the limitations. I would say it's, barber shops listed, this would certainly be incidental.
I, I find it kind of funny that you could open a doctor's office or a dentist's office, but you couldn't put in a hair salon.
Right.
That just doesn't make sense, like, it seems to me there would be, I don't know.
Well, the reason I bring the other one is that I think you've already set the precedent that we can't do it. It was done within the last two years.
I mean, we have other places that have hair salons in houses.
Yes.
We do.
Yes, yes, we do.
I mean, because there's a license required for the business, state license, I would also argue that it was other professional offices or something along those lines. Professional offices not exceeding 2,500 square feet and employing more than five persons. I think there's a number of different, this would, categories this would fall under.
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking, when I look at, when I look at the use table, the only thing I saw that was even close was customer service establishment.
Now that you say that, I think that's what we used last time.
Yeah, and, and, and probably the reason it was denied is because it's not allowed in R1, R2, um, B2, obviously not in a natural resource. It's only allowed in business 1. But again, we have others in town, and if we've recently approved one, then we have precedent.
We don't have to follow precedent, that's not our thing, we can do what we want.
Yeah.
No, we can't be doing that, we can't follow precedent. All right, so, do we think that it can be considered, um, anything in the table of use regulations that would be appropriate?
Yes, customer, I believe, I agree with Peter, customer service establishment.
Okay.
Or other professional offices, I mean, I think several.
See if those have, those permitted, um, general office, so. All right, so we're looking at a special permit for that. Okay, is there one field that we can do that?
I do.
Yes, I do as well.
Okay. What do we have for, um, motion? Someone want to bring a motion?
Sure, I'll bring a motion that we, um, motion that we view this as a customer service as an establishment under the description of use.
And, and that we grant the special permit for that use?
Right.
Is that what you're saying, David?
Yeah, so I'd say, yeah, we view it under the, that it falls under, we, a motion that it does fall under the table of use regulations.
Hold on, I'm sorry. Can we step back for a second?
Sure.
4.07a2 specifically references beauty parlors as customary home occupations. I think that's definitely how we've done it in the past, and that's what Wayne was referencing in the, um, in, in the application. I think that's a little bit of a cleaner way to do it.
I agree, Max.
Yeah, I see that now too, Max, 4.072.
Yep.
We'll use that.
Wait a minute, um, yep, beauty parlor, okay, I got it, I'm in.
Here we are searching for hair salon with beauty parlor.
All right, so, I was going to say, I did Ctrl+F on like every word I could think of, and it wasn't, parlor didn't come up.
The beauty parlor is the result, you go in as a hair salon, but you come out as the beauty.
That's a good one, Dave. All right, so we have a motion, do you want to modify that motion?
Sure, yeah, so I'll, David McCool here, I'll bring a motion that we find that the applicant falls under section 4.07 of the Nahad bylaws, so a motion that we find that it falls under the customary home occupations. And in addition to we approve the special permit on the applications, the applicant's application.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on the motion? Do we need to put any limitations on the hours or on the business, maybe we'll add something at the end, that as presented, that there will be no employees, that we know more than two customers into the shop at any given time?
We probably should have a, a timeline of, you know, no, no business after, whatever it is, 10 o'clock at night or something like that, but, you know, I'm not sure what is conducive to this.
So, the hours that, Amy, what are the hours that you said you were working?
So, I can work anywhere from 9 to 9. It's, it depends on what you feel is appropriate.
So, do we want to put a stipulation that hours, um, I mean, 9:00 in the morning is fine, but I mean, I would say 8:00 in the morning until 9:00 PM. That way there, if you have a wedding and you need to do a lot of extra people, maybe, you know, you start early, but, uh, yeah, so, a motion that we put a stipulation on hours of operation, um, at 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
I'll second the motion, Peter.
We didn't finish our first motion yet.
Oh.
David McCool's motion.
That's right.
So, we're just deliberating that, deciding what conditions to put on it.
Can it be just an addendum to the motion?
Yeah, let's do that, do an addendum to your motion, David. McCool, that way there we can move on.
Friendly amendment to put restrictions on hours of operation from, actually, I'm going to include all of it, so, a friendly addendum to your motion to stipulate hours from 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM, that no more than two customers at a time allowed in the shop. Anything else? I think that was it.
Maintain licensing, I guess.
Yeah, maintain proper licensing. Do we also, and I'll have to make the motion again, but any prohibitions on Sunday hours? Just putting it out there, I don't.
Do you work on Sundays, Amy?
The only time I would work on a Sunday is like if I did have a wedding, but no.
Okay, so, we'll just leave it as is then. So, again, friendly amendment to restrict hours from 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM, no more than two customers in the shop at any given time, and maintain all proper licensing.
All right, um, do I have a second on that friendly amendment?
Seconded.
A discussion on that motion, on that friendly amendment. Okay.
No.
All in favor, roll call, please.
Peter Barber, aye.
David Walsh, aye.
David McCool, aye.
Max Casper, aye.
Justin Campbell, aye. Okay, so you're, you're good to go, Amy.
Thank you very much.
So, we're going to do, we want to, um, we want to write that up in the next week or so.
Point of order, don't we have to approve, we, we approved putting the amendment in, now we have to vote on the.
Friendly amendment to put restrictions on hours of operation from, actually, I'm going to include all of it. So a friendly addendum to your motion to stipulate hours from 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM that no more than two customers at a time allowed in the shop. Anything else? I think that was it.
Maintain licensing, I guess.
Yeah, maintain proper licensing. Do we also, and I'll have to make the motion again, but any prohibitions on Sunday hours? Just putting it out there.
Do you work on Sundays, Amy?
The only time I would work on a Sunday is like if I did have a wedding, but no.
Okay. So we'll just leave it as is then. So again, friendly amendment to restrict hours from 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM. No more than two customers in the shop at any given time and maintain all proper licensing.
All right. Do I have a second on that friendly amendment?
Seconded.
A discussion on that motion, on that friendly amendment. Okay. All in favor? Roll call, please.
Peter Barber, aye.
David Walsh, aye.
David McCool, aye.
Max Casper, aye.
Dustin Campbell, aye. Okay. So you're, you're good to go, Amy. So what we're going to do is we want to, um, we're going to write that up in the next week or so.
Point of order. Don't we have to approve, we, we approved putting the amendment in, now we have to vote on the.
You're right.
Original amendment.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So let's take a vote on the original amendment. We've already discussed.
No, on the original motion. Yeah, as amended.
As amended. So we don't need to second that. We had two seconds already. So we have a.
Peter Barber, aye.
Peter Barber, aye.
David McCool, aye.
Max Casper, aye.
Dustin Campbell, aye. Okay.
It's my Dave Conlin like streaming through me.
All right. So where are we now? So we're in a good place. We have agreed, agreed to give you a special permit. Did we make a finding that we need to make for this permit?
Well, the hardship.
I think it was included in the, in the motion because the finding was that a beauty parlor was a, was an acceptable home.
Okay, but it's a special permit. We need to find that it's not substantially more detrimental.
Oh, you're right. You're right.
We have a motion to make that happen.
I'll make a motion that the, the application or the use of this space as a beauty parlor is not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood.
I'll second that.
Okay. Dave Walsh. And a discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Peter Barber, aye.
David Walsh, aye.
David McCool, aye.
Max Casper, aye.
Dustin Campbell, aye. Okay. So that's it. All right.
Thank you.
So we will get the paperwork done about the next week or so. Take, we have two weeks to do it, but we'll get it done fast. And then once we do that, there'll be a 20-day appeal period where people can appeal.
Okay.
And then after that, it's officially yours.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. So once again, we're already at 6:04 PM. And we were supposed to talk about some administrative matters tonight. In particular, we have to talk about annual meeting things. Is that everybody here still? We do. Caitlin's here. Michael, Michael Roa still here?
Yep. Yes.
Yes? Okay, great. So, um, it's already six o'clock and I know we have at least one person, Dave McCool has to leave.
Actually, I'm in good shape now. I made a change. I'm, I'm okay.
Okay, great. All right. So let's, I'm going to open up the rules then, take a look at them and share them with you. By the way, we did make the change on the advertisements and that went over and people have been paying it. So I guess the town's pleased with that. They did open an revolving account for us so that when the monies come in, they go into this particular account and we can then, you know, use that to pay any. We're not going to, eventually we'll be doing it that way, but right now we're still having the applicant pay for the application fee and for the advertisement. So I think there's some things in the chat I just wanted to tell you about. I got a chat from Michelle Capano asking if there had been an opinion from the planning board on the Tennysonville Road, and I responded no. And then I got a chat. It says here that, oh, Dan Burman is on the planning board and that is why it was reviewed at their last meeting. Thank you. Okay. No, I think she just was confused. Maybe she thought it was reviewed there and wondering why we didn't have a, you know, review regarding that matter. All right. I'm going to share a screen. Let me get this open first. Let me do this quickly. Has anyone had a chance to look at our rules and regulations?
No, really no.
Caitlin's saying yes. Other people saying no. All right. So these are our rules and regulations right here. And in it, it says that we will have an annual meeting and that our board will consist of five regular members and up to four associate members. Unfortunately, we have two associate members right now because we're going to be needing them. We have several matters coming up, Michael and Caitlin, that, you know, we are going to need you. So you'll be starting pretty soon. So once we, every year, what we've, we've planned on doing, but we haven't been able to because of COVID and being busy with these hearings and things. We wanted to take a vote as two officers and that person would typically stay in the position until they are voted out or until they quit that particular role. Currently, I'm the chair and David is the vice chair. And we should talk about that at some point. And also, I wanted to make changes to these regulations that pointed out to people, we could play this on record, about the fact they now have to pay for the advertising. Um, did anybody have anything in particular they wanted to talk about tonight?
Yeah, regarding what you and I talked about earlier today.
Yes.
And so it was brought to my attention by an attorney that the 35 days that we used to before, when we get the application, we wait 35 days in order to get comments or recommendations from either the zoning board or, I mean, not just the planning board or other boards. Now, the state law, which is Chapter 48, Section 11, says that we may let other boards take time to comment on them, but it doesn't say requires. The other part of that state law says that state law only applies to special permits, not variances at all. So a couple of issues that we need to discuss, do we want, so the complaint is that people are putting in an application in, at the least, it takes 12 to 13 weeks before they get permission. And considering most of the applications or most of the houses in town require some sort of variance or special permit, I think we need to find a way to, I don't know, speed the process a little bit.
So David, I think, well, since we talked, I did, you know, I sent you an additional email letting you know that that this particular part of Section 40A, 40A, Section 11, the 35-day requirement for review by other boards. It's a may, in other words, the zoning ordinances or bylaws may provide that petitions for special permits shall be submitted for review, right?
Yes.
But when, and when they are submitted for review, the law says they have to have 35 days. Right? But in our case, they are, they are submitted for review because it's in our bylaws. Section, I guess, 9.06 in our bylaws says that we must submit our appeals to the other boards, Conservation, Board of Health, Planning Board, et cetera, for review. So we're stuck with that 35 days unless we change the bylaws. If we change the bylaws so that no review was required, then we could avoid this 35 days.
Now, does the, what is, since I can't see that bylaw, does that bylaw say for special permits and variances?
I'm going to show it to you right now because I've got it right here. Very easy.
It's a town bylaw though, right?
Yes.
So we do not have the power to change it.
That's correct.
It depends on how it's worded. That's what I'm trying to see how it's worded. Because the state, the state law only requires a special permit or doesn't even require it, says may, does not require it for variances.
Okay. So what, what our bylaws say is that before the Board of Appeals considers any appeal, copies of the notice of appeal and supporting documentation must be filed with the Board of Health, Planning Board, Conservation for their review and recommendations. So.
Does it say anything about 35 days?
It doesn't, but that's where the statute comes in because the statute says if, in other words, zoning ordinances or bylaws may provide that petitions for special permits shall be submitted to and reviewed by one or more of the following Board of Health, Planning Board, Department, blah, blah, blah. Any such border agency to which petitions are referred, referred for review shall make recommendations. I won't go into the whole thing, but then it says they must make the recommendations within 35 days. So if you've got a, if you've got a requirement in your bylaws that says that you must give your appeals to these boards to review, the statute says you have to give them 35 days.
Okay. So there's therefore no reason that we couldn't hear it on a 36th day?
Correct. Correct.
All right. If we were able to do that, we'd probably cut a couple of weeks off, some of the, some of the weeks.
Well, sometimes, you know, we can do that. Sometimes we have done that. We can certainly try and do it faster. I'm, I'm game for it. Everybody will just, you know, can respond to my emails quickly and we used to have a set date, remember? We tried to do that for a while. It didn't work. It stopped working because people were not available or, you know. So we tried to be flexible. Does everyone want to stick with the set date or do you want to try and be flexible and try and, especially since we're doing it over Zoom now, it makes it a lot easier.
Right.
So if you get these next applications, we'll do them as fast as possible.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'd just like to see, you know, the citizens of the town have the best possible method of getting their hearings done and not, and not turn it into a capital program.
Okay. Agreed.
If you're running for election again, that sounded like a stump speech.
No, it's, I am not. I'm a little difficult to run while I'm down here.
All right. So what, what we can maybe do is the second we get the application, we'll just schedule it for the first day everyone's available after 35 days.
Okay.
Yeah, that's good. The, the set days aren't good for me. I, I have a lot of night meetings. So to be, have a little flexibility is good, but I'm, I'm all for schedule them as soon as possible for the people.
Okay. All right. Way to go. I like that idea too. So I think we've been trying to do that, but again, we get the applications and then we got that 35 days and we're trying to find a date in between. Before we were sticking to the set dates and that hasn't worked out. So it's a good point, David. I think we can make things a little faster if we do it that way. If we can have our advertisements coincide with that 35-day period too, that's helpful.
Right.
So, all right, we'll do that. So back on the, on that other piece, which was the rules and regulations, this is the part I want to show everyone. So I'm making a couple of suggested changes to Section 3.11 and 3.12 of the rules and regulations. And this is to reflect that the applicant is now going to be paying the advertising fee separately. Okay? That is so.
Yep.
Anyone have the objection? Let me know about that. Do we need a vote?
Do we have to make a motion on each of these, Jocelyn?
Can you say it again?
Do we have to make a motion on, on these changes?
One second. Somebody's vacuuming out here. I don't know why. I know I'm in a meeting.
That's what it sounded like. Does it say somebody's keeping their house clean?
No, it said, I meant the office. Okay. What did you say, Peter? I'm sorry.
I just, do we have to make a motion and approve all the changes? Like.
Yeah.
You know, okay. So we would do it at the end or not individually?
Well, this is the, these are the only changes. This is the only place there's a change.
Yep.
So I can bring a motion, motion to approve the changes to Section 3.11 and Section 3.12 of our rules and regulations to reflect the fact that applicants are now paying for the cost of advertising directly to the newspaper. And the town is no longer including it in their application fee.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on the motion?
Are Caitlin and I eligible to vote?
Let's see, why not?
Yep.
Okay.
And all in favor? Roll call, vote please.
Peter Barber, aye.
David Walsh, aye.
David McCool, aye.
Max Casper, aye.
Mick Rower, aye.
Caitlin, Kelly, aye.
Your first vote. Yay. And Dustin Campbell, aye. Okay. So those changes are good. And so the only other thing, before I go on, does anyone have anything else they want to say?
Now, these, these rules are, will be immediately updated and available to the public on the town's website?
That's correct. They're there now. We post the rules all at the, on the website now. But we're going to update them. Once everybody's voted in, we're going to post it to the website. Okay? Okay. So the next thing is regarding the actual preparation of the minutes and the decisions. Is, I want to know if there's anyone else who would be willing to help with that. I know that not everybody can, but sometimes I just can't get to it. You know, I try, but I do work a lot of hours. I do enjoy it and I don't want to give it up actually completely, but I, I could use some help. So I think if we could maybe take turns, not everybody even has to do it because everybody contributes something different to the board, I think. But I want to put that out for discussion. Does anybody think that they would like to help drafting the minutes? And it's important to have the same person do the minutes as the decision, I think.
I'm happy to help.
Because the information is already on your computer. Just paste it into a different format.
I'm happy to help.
Michael, Michael is? Okay, good.
Also, do we ever get any feedback from Tony regarding getting a clerk to actually take the minutes in, transpose them into a document?
He had said before, there was no way that we could get anybody. So, and we tried using him, remember? That didn't work out. So we, we don't have it in the budget. They don't even have it in the budget for, for anything, even for our training. But one of the things that Tony, Tony pointed out to me the other day is that now that we've got this revolving account and now that the applicants are paying separately for their advertising, that money is going to go into this account and we'll be able to use it for training and possibly for a secretary.
That would be awesome.
Wouldn't it?
Yes.
As it stands now, the, where, where are the recordings kept? Is it kept on Zoom or in your computer, Jocelyn, or where?
So what happens is now I, I post the recording to the town website, like within a few days of the hearing. Usually I can do it the next day. I can do it tonight if we want to. There's a Dropbox for any big recordings that go to the website. And so I put them in this box and Robert, the webmaster, posts it to the webpage. Our webpage is terrible. I've asked for help to get it straightened out, make it look better, but no one has been responsive to that. So we need help with that. So typically what I do is I review the, the video, then we, I take notes, you know, right after minutes, then the decision. So we have two weeks to do that.
Also, what if we advertise, well, just suggested on State of the Hot Facebook, looking for somebody to update our webpage? Somebody who's in, I know several people in town that build webpages, so I'd see if somebody would be interested in throwing a couple of dollars into making it better.
I don't know. I mean, I don't know who. You'd have to ask Tony or, or Diane Dunphy at the office at Town Hall, who actually manages it. I don't know who does. Maybe you'd know more, much more than I would. But I know that in the past, I've mentioned it when Peggy was there and she said Robert, the webmaster, he kind of handles it. I think he does it inexpensively and that's probably why it is where we, it is what it is. But I like, I love marble heads. You know, you ever see their website for their zoning? Beautiful. Nice place to decision, not decision, but their minutes. By the way, the decisions do not get posted, only the minutes. If you have a chance, take a look at that. I think it's pretty good.
Why would the decision not be posted?
They're just not, and I don't know why, but they typically are never posted. It's only the minutes.
Many times they get recorded in the registry, right?
Correct. Correct. But usually what you see posted is, but what's required to be posted is the agenda of the meeting and for that meeting notice and then also the minutes. and for that meeting notice and then also the minutes.
I can't imagine any reason not to give similar publicity to the decisions. That's the ultimate output of the board, right?
Right, but it's not about publicity, it's about what's required for notice by the, you know, 48.
No, I know it may not be required, but in the public interest, I just, I'm surprised that it's not, not typical to, to post them.
Well, I agree with you and I usually posted them initially, but then I realized I wasn't supposed to.
Also, also, just so you know, I just got a note from Michelle Capano saying town is releasing a new website in July. It was announced, it was announced at the Board of Selectmen meeting.
Oh, wow, Michelle, thank you. That's great. Wonderful. Michelle knows everything, it seems. All right, good.
Jocelyn, also happy to help. I just am due with my second child April 25th. So, probably just wouldn't be able to until I get like my feet under me after that, but then I'd be
But that'd be like, hopefully it's two months at least after that.
Yeah.
Hopefully you have a break.
Yeah. But no, I'd be happy to help otherwise.
You feeling okay?
Yeah, yeah. Can't complain.
Wonderful. All right, so I think what we should probably do too is talk about the roles and the positions that we all have. Currently, I'm chair and we should probably vote on that annually. And David, like I said, is the vice chair and I think also the clerk. There are no other really big roles here. We've got one for administrative secretary. And that's it. So, I do think with some help, if you guys, especially Michael, if you want to start writing some stuff. My guys, we've got this with the one for tonight. Do you want to start with that one tonight?
Well, I was not transcribing as we went along, but I'll be glad to try to catch up.
Okay, you can review the video. Okay, great. Um, all right, so does anybody want to make a change to the officers of the board?
With Jocelyn, I have to say you do a heck of a job. And I certainly, I certainly wouldn't try to dump in and better what you do.
Yeah, I, I wasn't gonna say anything.
Well, I don't feel like I do a good job. It's like a travel job. I'm always forgetting things. Tonight, I forgot to put on the recording.
That's all right.
Oh, you do a great job.
Yeah.
I do like it. I do love doing this. But again, having a little help with the decisions and things, sometimes that just, it gets to be a lot. It's fine when you only have one to do or once in a while, but when you have to do them all, it's too much. So, I really appreciate, Michael, that you can do that because not everyone is in a position to help. Other people work a lot of hours or they're traveling or what have you. So, that would really be helpful. All right, so we won't take a vote on any new officers right now. We can table that, especially since we have new members, I guess. And we can pick that up again in October. I would like to stay on in this position for a little while longer because I'd like to make sure we get through all the litigation that we have going on. I wouldn't want to put that on anybody else. So, why don't we do that? Is that okay with everyone?
Sure.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Should we, should we be setting aside time to testify in our depositions?
I hope not.
Let's hope not. We hope we don't have any new, any new litigation.
Jocelyn, we have an idea of a couple, approximately when these hearings are going to be coming up. And I know there's at least two that I have to, that I cannot participate in.
Well, we don't know exactly because Kim hasn't given us the applications. But I think what happened is that people have begun to apply and she has portions of them or they're missing things. She said there were three. There are three that she's going to give to us.
Okay, I know of at least two that I would have to recuse.
Yeah, I think I'm going to be recusing from one as, as well, Jocelyn, so.
But that one is probably both of us recusing from the same one.
Yeah, so probably have to be ready to activate the bullpen here.
All right, but Caitlin's going to be unavailable after the end of April.
Oh, yeah. Depending on everything.
Baby could come early. Okay, come
I'm sure, I was gonna say, I'm sure I could join in, like especially if they continue to be remote, like at home. Like with the baby, but I just don't know when it will get here. So, that's just
Okay. All right.
One of the other things, Jocelyn, is it possible that once we are able to all get back to meeting in person together, will they still allow Zoom?
I don't know.
What governs that?
Well, it was done under the governor's orders.
Right.
Right, the governor's orders are what's allowing us to do Zoom meetings now. But if you recall, there were two hearings that I was, in fact, I remember one, I was in Austin, Texas and I called in remotely and I have, I had to do, I had to basically do roll call vote because I was not in the room. Remember those?
Yes, I do.
So, I mean, not to say that, and I I'm trying to remember, there are some stipulations, but I'm, you know, I'm fairly certain that we'll be able to still, you know, call in remotely. At that point, we didn't have Zoom. It wasn't a Zoom meeting. It was, I called in. I think I called in on a telephone that was in the, you know, the basement of the Town Hall.
You did.
Yes.
Well, obviously
You had like a 40-foot phone cord brought in.
Yes.
We, we may have to figure out the legal authorities, but I cannot imagine that the world is going to go back to a non-Zoom world once we're out of this thing.
Right.
You know, we had a speaker at one of our meetings this, this past Monday and it was the head of the House Judiciary Committee. Today's Monday, it was this morning. Sorry, I am, it was this morning. The head of the House Judiciary Committee spoke and we talked about that. We talked about how this Zoom is going to affect the, you know, the courts and everything and whether it's going to continue. And everybody was in the consensus that it's going to continue in some fashion. So, I'm hoping it will for us as well.
Yes.
Anything else anybody wants to talk about?
Nope.
Okay.
All right, I'm making a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Barber, aye.
Aye, all, all fine.
Thanks, Jocelyn. Good job.
Thanks, Max.
Thank you so much, Jeff.
Good night.